Let's call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of San Clemente, Wednesday, September 17th, 2025. It's 6:01. We are at the San Clemente City Hall Council Chambers. And Commissioner McCacken is going to lead us in the pledge tonight.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All Commissioners are present with the exception of Commissioner Prescott Loffler, who let me know she can't make it tonight. Item four on the agenda is special order of business or presentation.
Chair, we all, oh, there he is. Never mind. Sorry.
Yep, he's here. We have none. That takes us to item five, which are the minutes from the joint special meeting on August 17th, which I did not attend. That was training. So for those that were there, if you are okay with the minutes, we could get a motion to approve.
A second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner McCacken, second, and by Commissioner Griffin. All those that were in attendance, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that passes. Thank you. Item B is the receiving file of our Planning Commission regular meeting minutes from August 20th. Do we have any motions or comments on those?
I think to approve.
Commissioner McCacken moves to approve. Anyone second?
Second.
All right. Commissioner McCann, seconds. All those in favor?
Aye.
Closed? All right, minutes passed. Thank you. Oral communication, any member of the audience that wants to speak to the Planning Commission about a non-agenda item? This is the time. I see a few people there. Anyone want to speak? No? Okay. Consent calendar is the next item. There are none. So that takes us to item eight, public hearing. We have one, 8A. It's a public hearing for Project 25307. It's a discretionary sign permit, which is discretionary sign permit 25-337, the Miramar Sign Program, which is located at 1700 El Camino Real. And this is a request for an outdoor signage of the historic Miramar Theater and Bowling Alley, currently being rehabilitated for use as an event venue and food hall. We need to make a finding that the project is also categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. We have Senior Planner Christopher Wright here with us tonight to make the staff presentation. Christopher, welcome.
Chair, before we move on, can we do disclosures?
Yeah, and I'm gonna, exactly, that's the next step. I want to, first of all, open the public hearing, and then ask my colleagues, does anybody have any disclosures that they want to make about this agenda item? None? Okay. Public hearing's open, no disclosures. Christopher, it's all yours.
All right, good evening, Commissioners. Christopher Wright, Senior Planner. This application is a request for discretionary sign permit. As noted, it's for the adaptive reuse of the Miramar Event Center and Restaurants project that's under construction at 1700 North El Camino Real. Here's an aerial photo of the property. Three signs are being proposed. Those signs require discretionary sign permit because over 25 square feet for a business in the architectural overlay requires that permit, as well as to allow a free sitting sign and to allow push-through lettering type signage in the overlay district. The intent of the discretionary sign permit is to make sure that that signage complements the building, where a lot of thought went into the design. And so things such as in the architecture, it's supposed to be handcrafted signage and appearance that typically means like painted signs, pin-mounted letters. It, in this case, there's some other type of specific sign that's proposed that we'll get to in a second, but overall, it's to fit that Spanish architecture. That's the main focus here. So in one example, here's a marquee sign, marquee projecting sign that's proposed. And you're going to see in the bottom right-hand corner that those were the, that was the original sign. It was much larger than what is proposed here on the left. So that would go onto the tower of the Miramar Event Center building. And then there's a monument sign that is proposed. On the upper right, you can see the arrow showing the location of the monument. It's already, the wall's already under construction, and all they're proposing to do is to add the letters to that, that wall. The wall was approved with the development project. So in this case, they're quarter-inch metal letters that are cut out and then affixed to the wall with uplighting, in the case of the monument sign. And then the food hall sign is proposed on the bowling alley side. We don't have any historic photos to get a sense of what signage was on that side of the site. So effort has been put into understated signage and have it fit that side of the building. In talking with the Design Review Subcommittee on August 27th, there was, while they were supportive of the project, they did have a recommendation to enlarge that sign if the owner had interest in doing so. So we reached out to the design team and owner, and they concurred that this enlarging the sign would be a benefit to the project. So they have elected to do that, and that is part of the plans before you this evening. So in summary, staff supportive of this project, we think that the signage fits the general plan policies to support this development, the coastal land use plan that's detailed in your resolution and the zoning code. Effort has been put into try to minimize the amount of signage on the building. So with the monument sign, it achieves that. And then having that projecting sign is actually smaller than what was there before. And with the building, having some non-conforming elements to it, it's understood that trying to preserve the look of that sign fits and maintains the historical integrity of the project. That concludes my presentation.
All right, thank you. On the presentation, are there any questions? Okay, here's our process for this public hearing, which is the same for all of them, but we're going to hear from the applicant if they was to speak. They have 10 minutes. Then we hear from the public, so we do have one speaker. So they have three minutes, each member of the public, three minutes to give their comment. And then the applicant is invited to come back if they wish for a rebuttal or to add additional information. And then we will make sure there's no final questions between the applicant and the staff, and then we'll close the public hearing. We'll have our discussion, and we'll have a decision. Okay. With that, I'd like to invite the applicant up to make their presentation.
I don't know if I can, my name's Steve Emery. I'm with ADS. We are the contracted sign manufacturer and installer for the program. Been working with the owner quite diligently on this and his architect. Again, if anything, we believe that the signage is understated on the, on the project as a whole. I think 820-some square feet are allowed. We're at like 58 square feet. So we're very, very much below that limit. Again, like Chris said, we try to remain true to the existing sign that was there. We're much smaller than that. We're illuminating with LEDs. We can put that on a timer if you want, so it's not lighting up the entire night. It's not a problem there. But other than that, again, we try to be very, very understated in what we, in what we proposed and put all the attention on the building, not so much the signs. So that's where we are.
Yeah, it looks like your monument sign is like six and a half square feet. Is that what you're, is that it? And then the theater projection sign is 71 and a half square feet, and then the food hall wall sign is 28.8 square feet. Is that about right?
I think overall, I have us right at about 52 square feet.
You do?
So if you, so if you count the projecting sign both sides, which the zoning ordinance, zoning ordinance says, it's 100.8 square feet, which is well below what's allowed in the code.
Yeah, what's allowed by zoning is 680, 668 square feet. So you're proposing 100. So you're really below what the zoning ordinance allows you to do.
Correct.
And then can you talk about the illumination? What is the plan for the illumination?
So it's an internally illuminated sign with LEDs. So it's not neon. I don't know if the old sign was neon or not, or if it was old fluorescent, or maybe even mercury vapor, who knows? But certainly LEDs are by far the industry standard these days. We don't make any signs fluorescent, and very, very few neon producers out there anymore.
Mm-hmm. How bright do you think it will be up and down El Camino Real, the projection sign?
Well, the light is only coming through the letters themselves and then a thin border around the sign. So I, I think it will be visible. I don't think it'll be distracting at all.
So you're talking about push-through lighting, so it's not, and it's coming from the inside and out, illuminating the outline of the letters.
Correct. Well, the, the letters themselves will illuminate, right? And the sides of the letters stick out about a half inch.
Got it.
So it's, we call it routed-out push-through letters. So it's a big piece of acrylic that we route out, the Miramar letters, affix them to the back. So it'll stick out a little bit, and then all the way around the outside of it will illuminate.
Okay. And what, do you have a schedule for illumination that you've talked to the owner about? How are you going to control when it comes on and goes off?
I have not spoken directly with him about that, but it's, you could easily put it on a photocell or a timer.
Okay.
Yeah, either way. And if that's required, we'd certainly put that on.
Okay.
It's a nominal fee.
Okay.
So we could do it business hours or, you know, an hour after business hours, you know, whatever the council wants to have us.
What color is the, the projection sign going to be?
White.
White?
Yep.
Is the contrasting colors, what are those?
It's, during the night, it'll appear black, but it's a brown, brownish, maroonish.
During the day, yeah.
During the day, it's, it's a maroon color, kind of brownish color.
Maroon or brown?
Let me see. Should have that.
Because I thought during design review, my recollection, it was more leaning towards the brown end of the color spec wheel there.
I don't see it on the call-out. It's certainly brown on, on this. Trying to read it on the call-out.
Christopher, do you have any, do you have any knowledge about what the colors are on the sign, for the projection sign on the, yeah?
I don't, I remember, unfortunately, the plan's in print and color, but I recall that when I saw the color version, it was like a brown.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
Like a bronze, like typical bronze.
Yes.
You see in the overlay district.
Yes. That's black and white.
It's a, it's a, it's a brown.
Okay.
Certainly a brown.
All right.
Yep.
Let me just, let me just poll my colleagues and see who else might want to ask you some questions.
Sure.
No? Commissioner McCann?
So the, the sign on the theater side, or the event center side, you said that's a LED? It's lit?
Yes.
So the whole box is lit? Just shines through the?
It just shines through the face, each side of the face, right? So it's a double, double-sided perpendicular sign, all right, blade sign. So all the light will be coming out the north and the south.
Okay.
And then it's in aluminum cabinet around.
It's, okay. So it's 12 inches thick. What are the edges? What's the color of the edge?
It's that brown.
That's the same brown?
Yeah, same brown as the aluminum.
Okay. And what is the Kelvin temperature that you're proposing for the LEDs?
6,500 is industry standard.
5,500?
65.
6?
Typically.
That's pretty white. You guys know that. So during the day, you won't have the light on, I assume.
Correct.
So there's a pretty good contrast between the
Oh, yeah.
brown color?
Oh, yeah. Be very, very readable during the day and certainly at night.
It's like a dark brown?
Yep.
On the other sign, the monument, those letters are set, it looks like about a half an inch off of the wall.
Yep.
And is that the same brown color?
No, those are black.
Those are black?
Black.
Okay. And it's frontlit?
Uplit from ground lighting, shooting up.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's a big wall, so the light will bounce off the wall and
Except, so it's a flood?
Yeah.
The food hall is a, this light, he's looking at the food hall.
I'm talking about the monument sign right now.
Oh, okay.
So it's going to be, you're going to have lights, what, below or on the wall?
Below, shooting up.
Okay. They're in, in the grade or?
Yeah, in the ground.
Okay.
Yep.
How does the landscape interact with?
That is not part of my purview. I'm just solely on that part of it, I'm solely putting the letters on the, on the wall. So I don't know if there were any kind of landscaping restrictions or, I'm not aware of it.
Well, that needs to be coordinated with the landscape if we want to have that thing lit properly. And I assume those are floods, so they've, they wash the whole wall?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. I think that's important. So that there's an even shadow? Because what's going to happen is if there's landscape and the landscape grows.
Grows up over it.
You're going to have, at night, you're going to have a fuzzy, I'll say fuzzy, background. Especially if the landscape grows and starts to interfere. I'm a little concerned about the, how that thing's lit. I don't think it's going to be consistent, especially at night, if it's frontlit. Was there any thought given to, you know, reverse channel letters instead of just the aluminum?
Certainly from a sign manufacturing standpoint, I could do that. But again, I did what the architect asked, and he wanted just flat-cut out letters. I think it might have been a cost consideration as well. If, channel, reverse channel letters would probably triple his cost on that.
Still not a big expense for, it's pretty minimal sign. We could talk about that. Okay, and then on the upper, the sign that's on the upper wall, you just have that single, looks like it's a gooseneck-type fixture that's supposed to light the whole sign?
That is correct.
There's no other lighting?
That's it.
Okay. Problem. Okay, that's, I think, let's see. Oh, and I guess I should ask Christopher about this, but what do we have going on with the tenant signage and the food hall? Is that all internal or? We could keep talking to him, right?
Yes.
Is that all internal, the tenant signage?
Currently, there's no proposal to have tenant signage facing the public, public streets. So there is no current proposal for that.
But there's got to be.
That's not part of this, this project, and if some modification in the sign program was proposed, it would have to be reviewed. So no, that's not part of this, this application.
Okay.
I know it'd be internal signage, not external signage.
Yeah, I think there are, what, 13 kiosks or something like that, and they all have a little place for interior signs inside.
So once you go inside, maybe there'll be a, like, directory of some sort or?
Possibly, yeah. But in terms of the zoning ordinance, if it's not visible to the public, it's not considered signage. That's regulated by the zoning ordinance.
Okay. I don't have any other questions. Thank you.
Commissioner McCann, questions? Commissioner Griffin?
Thank you. Echoing the sentiments of some of the other folks, on the monument sign that says Miramar Center and the lighting in the, in the landscape, I tend to agree. It's not going to hold up over the course of years. It gets water on it because you water the landscaping and then the lighting goes out. I'm just curious about, from your expertise, if there's a way to, you know, the wall's here and you bring out and up lighting off the bottom of the wall.
Yeah, there, there are certain uplighting LED fixtures that could come out away from the wall, but not in the bed of the plant.
Right, right, okay. So it's a possibility.
Oh, yeah. That's certainly a possibility.
I just wanted to make sure, just something to think about. And that's it for me. Thank you, Chairman. Commissioner Freeman, questions? All right. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to turn to the public now for their comments. We've got one speaker request. Scott Correll, you're welcome to take the mic at the podium there, and we do have the three-minute rule.
Okay.
And it's all yours. Welcome. Thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you. I'm a neighbor. I live here, I've lived here for four years, right across from the Miramar. And my concern is lighting, that's why I'm here. To clarify the signage, is it facing, is it facing north towards the car wash, like the Knuckleheads Bar? Is it, is that big, long monument, six foot, whatever, however long it is, is that facing? I want to, I need to see.
It's on El Camino Real.
So it is on El Camino?
Yeah.
So my, my only concern and the reason why I'm here is because, I only have three minutes, is Wally at Ocean's Motor, he actually, I came to you guys, and he adjusted the lights so they were flat because they were facing like this, and they were hitting those brand-new condos that C.H. Anderson built, so I'm one of the owners. And it was hitting all the bedrooms. And it was hitting all the bedrooms of all of our places. So he, Wally immediately just dropped him down. Great. The guy across the street did the same thing. So I'm only concerned with the future of this lighting, that it's not going to be too bright and hit our houses. So the placement of that banner sign, is it in the dead center of? It looks like to me it's to the right on, it's to the right of the tower, so
That's right.
the shadowing wouldn't hit the houses behind it?
No, it's, the light is directed, uh, the light is directed towards the north and the alignment of the street.
So that's, the street goes east and it goes west?
Yeah. So which building are, are you speaking of?
Where I live?
Yeah.
1631 Kai Lasbolas?
Okay. Yeah, that's on the other side of this.
Okay.
This building.
Okay, then, then, yeah. I, I, this is the first time I'm seeing this, so
Yeah.
if I could just take a picture of that, that'd be great.
Or I could even send you the presentation, but so like, here's a aerial picture to give you some context. And then where the lettering, North El Camino Real is, towards the east side is where the tower is located. Yeah.
Okay. I'm fine with that. Oh, good. Thanks, Tamara. Okay, that's all I had to say. Just concerned about lighting and the back street right there.
We appreciate you sharing your concerns tonight with us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, did you, you have the, okay. You're waving your opportunity to come back up again. All right. Tamara, you're going to get the little beeper too in a second. His timer's still going. Any other questions for staff or before I close the public hearing or the applicant? Yeah. Any other interactions with staff or the applicant? All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed and now I will turn to my colleagues for our internal discussion about this permit. I'm open to whoever wants to share their thoughts. Feel free. Commissioner Griffin, you want to lead us off?
Well, go ahead. I, I'm comfortable with everything related to this. The question I have is, is there an interest in asking or requiring the applicant to do some other type of uplighting on the monument sign pursuant to what has been discussed?
Mm-hmm. Let's, let's see how there's, if they feel the same way. So I want to talk about the lighting on the monument sign and their thoughts. Commissioner McCann?
Lighting in general.
Mm-hmm.
I'm a little concerned about the, well, I'm not going to get into my, I had some suggestions before the design review subcommittee, which were not, I don't want to say they were ignored, but
They were heard.
They were heard.
Summarily dismissed. But there was not agreement per se.
Which is fine.
Yeah.
But, but I think we should have a little discussion, starting with the, what are we calling it? The blade sign?
The projection sign?
The projection sign. You know, Miramar, it's easy, it's easy enough to read, I guess. It's vertically written. But the sign is so much smaller than the original building had. And the event center, to me, it's, it's almost a confusing thing. I mean, you don't, you can't really, I don't think even read it. So why is it there, you know? If the, if you want to say event center, maybe event and then on the top and then center on the bottom. I just, I just think it's a little, it's a little confusing, you know, to have that event center thing there, you know? You're not going to see what it is. I think it takes away from the, sort of the, the quality of the sign to have that. Especially with that sort of cursive lettering. I just, you know, I don't, I don't like the way it looks. Again, that's just my opinion. You guys, I'm sure will have yours. It's, I know that sixty-five hundred Kelvin is, is standard for these kind of lights, but it's white, white. It's super white. So the building is, is more of a, you know, it's a, it's an historic structure. I just think that it's, it's, we should tone that down. Maybe forty-five hundred Kelvin might be more appropriate. So I have that, that concern. I think it's too small, but I'm not going to argue with, about that or debate that at the moment. So moving on to the, you know, the monument sign, do we have? Okay, so, so we can see on sheet, what sheet is this? Isn't it, oh, eight of 10. The shape of the monument. And that wall is already there. Is that what we heard?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So is it really necessary to have San Clemente on the, on the sign? I mean, we know it's in San Clemente. To me, I, I don't think that's necessary. I think it'd be stronger, you know, without that. I mean, if you just sort of imagined it without the San Clemente text on there, I think it would be a lot stronger. You know, we're in San, everybody knows we're in San Clemente, right? Unless there's another Miramar. That we're trying to distinguish ourselves.
I mean, we're in discussion, right? So we'll discuss. I mean, my, I didn't really, that did not seem out of place to me only because I, this is, this is a key intersection. It's, even though the city boundary is a little bit more north, this is sort of a gateway into the main part of San Clemente. It's like a greeting. It's like a welcoming. So for me, I, I viewed it as a gateway. And I don't know if staff did the same thing, but I didn't, I didn't have an objection to identifying the location due to the prominence of its location.
Okay.
Would you concur with that? Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, let's talk about the lighting.
If you're asking questions from staff, I'd like to make one note just on what was just pointed out. There is another Miramar Center that's a food hall in San Diego. I, I don't know if it's the same developer, but they could probably point that out with text on their website instead of the side of the building, if that was the intent.
Well, so it is in the same state.
Yeah, I'm just thinking it's a gateway up location.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the lighting, I, I'm a little concerned about the lighting on both the monument sign and on the building where it says Food Court.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think with that one gooseneck fixture, even if it's a flood, how far off the wall is that, is that light fixture? Maybe a ton.
It should be on the sheet. It's really hard to tell.
I'm not seeing that on the plans. Does the?
Yeah, I would imagine it's a couple of inches away from the wall, so whatever the size of the
Yeah, which means you're going to get a hotspot there in the middle. And then the edges are going to fade. So I think we need to consider possibly a different kind of a fixture. I understand this gooseneck fixture is historical, but we could do a broader light fixture that would spread the light more evenly.
Yeah.
So you could see the food hall. I think the light fixture is fine. But you can get these light fixtures with a kind of a gooseneck and then they have a, they have a wider lamp or the lamp can be wider.
Mm-hmm.
The other thing is if the lamp is visible, then it's a, it's a glare field.
Mm-hmm.
So if it's, if it's a kind of fixture, and it can be, you know, I'm not trying to add cost here, but it can be custom. There's a lot of light manufacturers, you know, that'll do something custom. And if it extends out and then shines back towards the wall with some sort of a screen and it's far enough out there, it'll be effective in terms of giving us a nice shadow of that, especially at night, and giving us a nice even look across that sign. I think we should do that. I, I don't know that we have to, you know, have this come back, but if we can add that somehow.
I think we could make suggestions. Is that fair? On certain elements of the lighting?
I think it'd be most effective if you want to make a decision tonight and incorporate that to like have a modify, modify condition. So there's a standard condition regarding the implementation of the project being in conformance with the approved plans. So you'd modify that condition to just say with the following changes to
Okay, can you identify that condition for me, please?
Sure.
Anyway, go ahead, Commissioner McCann.
Well, I think it needs to, there needs to be a mock-up of that light fixture so it can be tested to make sure that it spreads the way we want it to. That's a pretty important sign, especially since it's the only one we have on the exterior of the building. On the side facing that intersection, aside from the monument. Same thing with the monument sign, I think that
You're just, your, your commentary is it's underlit and
Uh, well, it may not be underlit right in the middle.
Yeah.
But it's going to be underlit on the edges for sure.
Yeah.
With the single fixture right in the middle.
Yes. Okay, I'm going to have to open the public hearing again, so this is kind of a thing where maybe we want the, the sign guy to come and speak to this?
Uh, possibly, yeah.
So I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and I'm going to invite our applicant to come up because I do, you know, we're, you're, he's changed, he's making some good recommendations for the, the lighting design. Would you care to comment on that?
So initially, the letters were smaller fourteen inch.
That's right.
Right, and then we
Looks like the same lighting.
increased them based on your recommendation
Yes.
from the design review.
But we didn't update the lighting, I think, to match.
Correct. It, I think maybe the easiest way to do it is maybe to add another one and kind of separate them a little bit. So you have two, right?
Well, the problem is it's up there in that, in the tower. And if you have two of them, they're going to be too close to the edge. And I don't think that it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be appropriate in terms of the context. I mean, it's
It's centered on the, on the, on a, the tower feature.
Right.
So you'd have to almost maybe take it on the sides of the, the apex.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why we can't have the same
Just a bigger
single fixture with a wider
Wider aperture.
Like a wider
Hood, lens.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that, are you open to that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that would be a problem with the owner.
Okay.
What about the reverse channel on the, on the monument?
I think
What do you guys think?
I mean, I think that's the, that's first class. That's the way to ideally do it versus shining a light in, you know, on it and having, you know, the bulbs go out and the landscape grow over it or the splinkers, you know, short it out.
I just don't think this is a good long-term solution. You don't want it to be a maintenance issue. And if we do the reverse channel, I mean, it's the only sign really of, um, on the mon, we don't have any other monument signs.
Let me just poll my, our colleagues here. Strong feelings about yes, no on that? Brett? Neutral or yes, no?
I'm, I'm borderline.
Okay, you're neutral. Patrick?
I definitely, definitely want to consider the monument sign having different lighting that's not in the landscape.
Okay, so you're, you're supportive of it?
Yeah.
What about you?
Um.
Commissioner McCann?
I, I think the reverse slit would look better, but it seems also, you know, more contemporary and it's not a historic building.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't have super strong feelings either way.
Well, technically, it's the same effect if you have a reverse channel. Because if you're frontlighting it, it creates a shadow, right? Because the light is shining on it. The shadow can, it's not necessarily just the letters. But the thing about the reverse channel is it gives you a nice even light. So it's going to be the same issue, I think, for the monument sign that we have with that upper. It's not going to be evenly lit.
Yeah, if you're familiar with like the lighting at the outlet malls on their entrances, it's the reverse channel where, and they have the colors that change.
Right.
So it's a similar, it's similar.
Mr. Chairman, I want to, I want to get clarity here. Let's talk, talk about one sign at a time. I, I want to talk about the monument sign. I'm not interested in having it look any different. I just want the lighting to not be in the landscaping. I like the idea of a shadow
Okay.
next to the black letters. I think that looks very nice. So I, I'm, I don't support channel lighting there.
Got it.
I just want the landscape and the lighting to be separate from one another too.
Got it.
So we don't have maintenance issues going forward.
All right. Any other comments?
No, I think that's enough.
Okay, okay. Did you have any other comments before we, I close the public hearing?
Regarding, regarding the uplighting on the monument, there are like LED bars, basically a little small cabinet that would stretch out the whole length and give nice even illumination up. And that's not overly expensive. That's not going to put anybody out a lot of money.
Is that what you're proposing here?
I mean, if, if you don't want like floodlights on it, yeah.
Okay. So LED, LED
Bar is what we
All right. Thank you. I'm going to close the public hearing and resume our conversation. Any other conversation about the signs? Commissioner McCacken, any comments, thoughts?
On the tower sign that says Miramar, I don't. If, you know, if they wanted to say event center, however, that's fine. That's their choice. On this sign?
Is your mic on?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. There you go.
So on the Miramar sign on the tower, I don't really have any comment. For this monument sign, I kind of like the channel idea, but I really don't want to get too picky because it is their sign and they'll be in charge of the landscaping, so I'll kind of go whatever the majority of the consensus is of the planning commission. For the food court, I just want it to be, I mean, for the food hall sign. I think they've kind of agreed maybe to use two apertures or two
Or a larger aperture, actually.
Yeah, that, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Okay, so here's what I've heard. I've heard toning down the Kelvin to forty-five hundred on the projection sign to more or less match the paint color.
Oh, is that on the dimmer? Or is that just one temper, or one
A setting.
Setting.
The sixty-five hundred?
No, 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 the light LEDs, are those on a dimmer?
For what?
So it's just one setting?
On or off?
Sorry, yeah, it's either on or off.
Okay.
So I heard that. I heard a wider aperture lighting on the food hall and then either an LED bar or reverse channel on the monument. Anyone want to make a motion on what they, what they've heard or express what they're interested in doing?
I'm okay with the LED bar.
Okay.
On the monument.
All right.
I think it's fine.
Christopher, where would be the, if we want to make a, a condition of approval, what, which one would we modify?
I would modify 1.3.
1.3, use and development of this property shall be in substantial conformance. Okay, so I'm going to make, should I make a motion? Okay. I'm going to, just bear with me for a second. I, yes?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so to condition number 1.3, after it says with the approved plans?
Yes.
You could say, um, as modified with the, with the approved plans, with modifications included below and then continue the sentence. And then at the end, say, uh, the plans will be modified to include the following and then your changes that you have.
Got it. Okay. Thank you, that was helpful. I'm going to go ahead and move that, the following, that this, that we determine that this project is categorically exempt from the requirements of the Sequel Guidelines, section five, uh, 15301. That's a Class 1 existing facility. And that it's a Class 11 accessory structure. Also, number two, that we adopt Planning Commission Resolution twenty-five zero one four approving discretionary sign permit twenty-five three three seven signage for the Miramar Event Center and Restaurants with a change to condition of approval three point one. Where we would modify that with plans with, plans with modifications identified below. One, that the projection sign illumination be adjusted to forty-five hundred Kelvin. Two, the food hall sign employ a larger lamp to provide even illumination without glare. Three, that an LED light bar be used for the monument sign to provide broad illumination with care to ensure landscape does not obstruct it. Are we all good with that?
Chair, just one quick correction. You said condition of approval three, uh, one point, sorry. You said three point one, but it is one point three.
One point three is what I meant. Thank you, yeah. Got a lot in my head. Okay. If we're good with that, I just need, second, thank you, Commissioner McCacken, second stat. Any discussion on the motion? Staff comfortable with the motion? Great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passage unanimous. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. I'll make the changes.
Thank you. Appreciate your flexibility and being here tonight.
All right, thank you.
Christopher, thank you. Next item is new business, item nine A. We are going to discuss a SB one four two five. It's a open space update to our general plan. And we have Brandon Hanley here. He's a planning technician representing staff. He's got a report. Brandon, thank you for being here tonight. You have the floor, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Staff is requesting feedback on a general plan amendment to comply with California Senate Bill fourteen twenty-five. SB fourteen twenty-five mandates that every city and county in California review and update their open space plans by January first, twenty twenty-six. General plan updates in consideration with SB twenty, fourteen twenty-five must include plans and action programs that address climate resilience and other benefits coordinated with the safety element, equitable access to open space and rewilding opportunities to preserve and enhance natural ecosystems. The update consists of a new element or updates related to those elements already in the general plan. This presentation is structured to introduce policies that can address the requirements outlined in this bill and receive any feedback from commissioners. Staff will present a finalized draft of this general plan amendment at a future public hearing so that the planning commission may forward a recommendation to the city council. SB fourteen twenty-five is part of a series of state legislation related to open space planning and the environment. This bill has no implementation guidelines yet from the state. To do some research, SCAF reached out to a number of municipalities to learn about their implementation strategies and gauge their level of effort. There are three main approaches that we saw. Updating related elements during their next comprehensive general plan review, creating a targeted amendment that directly addresses the resilience, equity and rewilding policies in an open space element, or weaving SB fourteen twenty-five policies into related elements. Staff recommends cross-element integration strategy as the most cost-efficient and minimally invasive approach to compliance. San Clemente's Centennial General Plan does not have an open space element. So adding equitable access to policies like the coastal and natural resource elements and adding climate resilience and rewilding strategies into the safety elements will satisfy the mandates in SB fourteen twenty-five without the cost of creating a new element. Another benefit of implementing SB fourteen twenty-five policies is that we will have existing framework in our general plan that requires minimal supplementation for compliance. For example, if we tie the local hazard mitigation plan into our safety element, which already exists, that provides a large part of the resilience and rewilding aspects of SB fourteen twenty-five. It also ensures that we remain competitive for grant funding that helps the city implement wildfire mitigation and vegetation management strategies that are outlined in the LHMP. Just a reminder that the, these are the findings required for a general plan amendment. Staff believes that the proposed amendment is consistent with the general plan and doesn't adversely affect the public health, safety and welfare. By complementing existing policies in the related elements, the general plan amendment can address key points of SB fourteen twenty-five while maintaining consistency with the general plan. The implementation strategy proposes to cover climate resilience by including the LHMP into our safety element, insert policies related to equitable access to related sections of the coastal and natural resource elements, and then add some existing language from the LHMP on rewilding to the natural resources element. Collectively adding these policies to relevant sections of the general plan and implementing these existing policies will satisfy the requirements of SB fourteen twenty-five. Implementation actions may be added in future municipal code updates consistent with the law and any future guidance provided by the state. Planning staff wants to introduce this project and the bill requirements to the planning commission and get some input on this implementation strategy prior to making any recommendations to the city council. That's all I have for the report. I also have some hidden slides with some more information to try and answer you guys' questions.
All right, Brandon, thank you. I, before I ask my colleagues if they have questions, I wanted to ask you to clarify if you could the flow. You're looking for input to a work program that you'll be recommending to the city council. City council will then approve that work program or alter it or whatever. And then you'll execute that work program and then come back to us when you're working on the work program. Do I have that right or, where, just help me understand the flow here.
Yeah, sure. So I'm introducing this as a new item and this is not a public hearing because I wanted to introduce the bill and then tell you that I'm trying to do this general plan amendment, or planning staff is trying to do this general plan amendment before the end of the year. At the next hearing, I would like to speak with you guys again with a general plan amendment, like a draft, and that draft with your recommendation will go to the city council for approval.
Okay, okay, got it. So you already, I have a work, approved work program for this and you're just working, and you're working on it?
Yes, I'm working on it and I want to hear from you guys before I bring something that you're gonna send to city council.
Yeah, so this is more or less like a scoping session.
Yes.
Is what you're looking for. Okay. Comments? For the staff on, just help them scope this. We'll start with Commissioner McCann.
I have no problem with the, with the strategy of implementing it in the cross-integration strategy. I'm looking at section policy C dash two point oh five, natural resources. It says, "We protect natural resources by restricting the encroachment of development incompatible land uses and sensitive habitat disturbance." I personally don't like the saying restricting the encroachment of development. So I'd like to see that struck. I mean, we're, we're the planning commission. We should be approving development that's sensitive to the various requirements and stuff, but not saying we, we're, we're supportive of restricting development. How about development that's compatible with the natural resources or whatever. So that's my only comment.
Okay.
So can I ask you a question about your comment?
Sure, of course.
So is this, are we thinking that this is actually development and the open space?
Well, well, that, that's what it implies, which is just, you know, kind of ludicrous to begin with.
It's already restricted anyway.
Yeah, exactly. It says it's a natural resources.
Commissioners, can I interject briefly? I need to make a clarifying statement. I don't know if these were printed in color. We're actually, C two oh five is already in the general plan. I highlighted it because it already supports the intention of the Senate bill.
Oh, I thought green meant it was proposed.
No, yellow, only yellow.
Sorry, the yellow text is the one that's being proposed as a policy addition. The green ones are already in there in support SB fourteen twenty-five as it stands.
What are the white ones? They're ones that are already in there but not supportive?
They're ones that aren't related to this Senate bill. They exist in the general plan, but they're not as directly related to what we're talking about tonight.
Okay, well, I guess, so that's, you know, different than what I had thought. I thought the highlighted meant that that was being proposed. But in any event, if we're recommending changes to the, to the policy, I would recommend striking that. But, yeah, because we're not approving, gonna be approving development in the open space, but any development near the open space or whatever should be compatible, just like it says. Sensitive to habitat disturbance.
The zoning code already allows certain kinds of development in open space. But that's not gonna change, I don't think.
You mean like, like public bathrooms and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Sure.
For instance, yeah.
Yeah. But maybe we have some open space that wants a public bathroom and this says we should restrict it.
Yeah, I just don't think, yeah, I agree with you. I don't think it's necessary.
That's my comment.
Okay. I didn't mean to, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good.
Did you want to keep going? And then we'll come back.
When's the last time? This is a new request from the state. So is this something that the city's done since the general plan approval?
So this law was passed in twenty twenty-two and it is about to, like, the deadline to be compliant is January first of twenty twenty-six, so we haven't done any.
So we're just getting around to it?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not a lot to react to here. Okay, that's all I have.
Commissioner Griffin, I see you popped your mic on. Did you want to share?
No, I'm, I'm comfortable with the way that staff's approaching it. I just, that's all I needed to say.
Oh, okay, great. Commissioner Freeman, thoughts?
I concur.
Okay. Commissioner McCacken, any thoughts?
I'm comfortable to proceed to give them direction on their recommended policies and cross-element.
Okay.
I guess it's gonna come back to us anyways.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Can I just ask you then? So we have the primary goal and then goal and policy sections. There's seven of them. Are you gonna, do you know, you know where I'm at? I'm on page six of the staff report. And there are seven of these goal and policy sections, starting with one, geologic seismic and soil hazards, two flooding and marine hazards, three wildfire, four noise, so forth and so on. You tracking me?
Are we referring to the coastal element or the?
The safety element.
Okay, the safety element. Gotcha. Okay, I'm on the same page as you then.
Yeah, are you proposing that you're gonna work on all seven of these or what? I'm just, the scope, what is your scope?
So in the context of the safety element.
Yep.
There is an existing document called our local hazard mitigation plan.
Yes.
And I'm just adding a paragraph at the end of the introduction to the safety element that references the local hazard mitigation plan.
Okay.
And then I also added a link to the local hazard mitigation plan in that additional link section so that the general plan is directly referencing our local hazard mitigation plan.
Okay. Okay, I mean, you, you put this here as an attachment with the highlighting, so I I put some effort into reading it, but it sounds like it's not just the safety element you'll be amending. You're gonna amend which other elements?
I'm going to be amending the coastal element.
The coastal element, okay.
And the natural resources element.
Natural resources.
If I can weigh in on just the exhibits and the approach we took, we wanted to show the context of the policies we were adding that we weren't just throwing them into the general plan, that they kind of fit in with other policies that already support those goals. And moreover, we will have to explain to the state why we're only really adding three new policies. And the intent of the bill originally was to add a whole new element to every city's general plan. We're taking this cross-integrated approach where we fit it into sections of the general plan that already support those goals. But when we submit this to the state, we will also identify the policies that are related that already support the same initiative. So that's why we have all the confusing highlighting.
What element is the state wanting cities to add?
Initially, the concept was that it would be a new open space element. And as Brendan mentioned, we don't have an open space element, so we would have had to pay a consultant a lot of money to write one.
Got it.
The state eventually allowed this compromised cross-integration approach.
Okay. Uh, yeah. Okay.
The two elements that we have in the general plan that are most related to open space are the coastal element and the natural resources element. So that's why we opted to add policies to those two.
Okay.
And then we also integrated the policies with existing ones that we have so that it's not disruptive or creates new obligations for the city.
Okay.
Well, and I think they, they, they're highlighting this other stuff to show the state, hey, we're already doing a great job on this stuff. We already had the stuff in there.
That's, yeah, that's, that's a great clarification. Brandon, are you looking for any more guidance from us tonight?
If you had any particular issue with the way I'm doing it or?
I think everybody, do I have the sense of everybody that the cross-element integration is satisfactory? You have our support.
Okay, and then my last question would just be how I got the verbiage, if you had any questions about that. And I have some slides about that, just how I borrowed from the coastal commission's definition of different stuff as well as like state guidance on equity or resilience or rewilding.
Yeah.
So you didn't recreate any?
No, I haven't reinvented the wheel here. Yeah, I just used.
Make that smart.
Yeah, I do too. It's hard to keep up with all the state mandates.
Yes.
So it's best just to, because it'll change again. So best just to check the, just keep moving. Keep moving, Brandon. Yeah. You, do you need a motion from us?
I do not need a motion.
Okay.
No, so our plan is to reintroduce this as a public hearing in three weeks at your very next meeting with a recommendation and a resolution that would forward this to the city council with your recommendation.
Got it. So the purpose of the public hearing is to invite the public to give their comments?
Yeah, and actually, we got one public comment like six months ago and Brendan notified that interested group of our draft documents. So if we get any comments from them in the next three weeks, you could still.
How would you, how are you gonna public notice that? Just? Newspaper?
Yeah, we're doing newspaper notice.
Okay.
By the way, it's not the next meeting, it's the one after. This is second meeting in October.
Okay, fair enough. Yeah, you.
No, I think it's October ninth is our, on the, what we just did the notice for.
Oh, okay. My bad.
Well, it's on, it should be on the TFA then at that point, right? So we're at.
Yeah, it's on October eighth.
Eight, eight is oh.
Okay, yeah, there it is. So it looks like you have our support to continue with the direction you are, have provided.
Okay, great. I will have a resolution for you guys on the next meeting.
Thank you so much. Zach, are you good with our action? Okay. That concludes item nine. And item, there are no more new business items, so item ten is new old business. We don't have any. Item eleven is reports of commissioners and staff. Any commissioner reports, questions? Commissioner McCann?
I'm gonna be absent from the October eighth, or seventh, actually, through the twenty-eighth, so that's at least one meeting. One planning commission meeting.
Two planning commission meetings.
Yeah, we're meeting, yeah, if we, the, the twenty-second. Looks like we're meeting on the twenty-second and the eighth.
Because this council meeting's not until the seventh.
Okay. Okay. Well, we'll miss you.
Do you happen to have a waiver that you can email over?
I will.
In case there's a special hearing or anything? If not, I can send you one.
That'd be great, if you wouldn't mind, Tamara. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything you want to share or ask? Staff?
So I'm going to be gone the 9th through the 27th of October.
The 9th.
So I don't think I'm going to the same place Steve is.
So you don't know.
So you're going to miss the 22nd meeting?
Right, I'll be here on the 8th.
Okay, so you'll need to submit a waiver too. Good night, Christopher. Thank you for being here. Appreciate you.
Just to pile on, I will be out the 8th of October. I will miss that meeting. Sorry.
Yeah, well, we have, we just have two, as long as Commissioner Prescott-Loffler's here, we're, actually, if we can be down three and have some quorum. Okay? Anybody else wants to share their travel plan? Great.
I have a non-travel comment.
Do you?
I have a non-travel comment.
Okay, great.
I read the Times, I think it was either on the weekend, it could have been Monday, but, you know, Senate Bill 79, this State Senator Weiner, who's already been involved in sort of like the ADUs and other things where they've exempted, or they've, you know, superseded state control over our zoning laws. The Senate Bill 79 involves transportation zones or transportation nodes. If you have a heavy rail transportation coming through your city, you may have to allow within a half a mile radius of that, that's, think of the San Clemente train station.
Yes, no parking type thing?
No, buildings up to eight stories high.
Yikes.
And this also involves single R1, R2, R3, so that means if any of the hills, that if, just draw a semicircle from the pier, the pier bowl, we won't have anything to do if somebody wanted to come in and build an eight-story condo or a, it's really pretty significant, it involves bus stops. Where around a bus stop, it can invade an R1 residential area up to a mile, I think it is, or a half mile again, and you could build five-story buildings. The LA City Council's already gone out against it, I would have thought they would have been for it, but I think here where we have some major bus stops, we have heavy rail, not light rail, that could propose some, it's something I think the staff needs to follow.
Staff's aware of that bill, as is the mayor, who's mentioned it, and as is the city manager, and I think there was a comment from OC council governments on that. There's three different definitions of transit within the state code, and, you know, the one that applies to ADUs is the most lenient, basically it says if you have any kind of bus stop or even a lift stop, then you have to allow ADUs to have no parking. There's a secondary one that applies for general commercial that doesn't want to provide as much parking. Then there's a more restrictive code in the state that says you have to have high-frequency service at rush hour on a transit corridor.
This provides seven levels.
It's not clear that.
They're in the bill.
That that would apply at San Clemente's Metro, MetroLink stations. They do have service, it's not clear yet whether they have high-frequency service during rush hour.
Well, this didn't mention frequency, it just said if you have heavy rail, because even the different, you know, light rail lines in LA and Orange County are affected depending on their definition, the state's definition.
Yeah, LA would be affected, the Metro, and the Bay Area where Senator Weiner is based, would be affected.
It'd be pretty hard to argue that.
I think the comment letters from.
A rail line isn't heavy rail. That's the heaviest.
Well, it's not frequent, San Juan.
Well, this bill doesn't talk about frequency, just talk.
He said it does.
Yeah, but this bill doesn't, not by how it's presented.
The comment letter, I think, was asking that the state provide clear guidance on that one way or the other, so that it wasn't up for interpretation.
So unless somebody sees it. It is, but most of these bills that came out of San Francisco, which is Weiner, State Senator Weiner, so I just thought I'd put that for you. He says Weiner, but I'll let you pronounce it. That's my only comment.
Thank you. I, before, Zach, are you going to have some comments?
I have no comments.
Okay, can we just talk about the TFA a little bit? It looks like we have a study session being proposed for our next meeting on the LCP and the parking study, is that correct? Are you planning that? Okay. I just want to point out to any member of the community that, the three people that may watch this, on the city of San Clemente website, san-clemente.org, is a San Clemente Parking Survey, and it's available on here until the 8th, or the 6th of October. So I just want to encourage any residents to complete that, give their feedback to the city on this parking survey. And then if they're interested, they can hear an update from the staff at our study session on the 8th. Okay.
Since we're on the TFA, I just want to mention that the 1022 Planning Commission, there's an error in the open space update, which is what I was looking at.
Okay.
So just know that that could end up being canceled if they don't have something from the TFA next week.
Okay. Fair enough. Yeah, it's, it's, it looks like it's on here for the 8th too. So the public hearing for it, right, Brandon? Looks like you're on for the, it says here on our tentative agenda that you're on here for the 8th.
Did I make a mistake?
If you didn't mean to be on the 8th, yeah, that's fine.
I believe we would like to keep it moving, so our intent would be to keep it on the 8th, and also if there's no other business on the 22nd, that might be good not to hold a meeting that day. So if we can get it done on the 8th, we will do so.
Okay, and so there's possibility we may not have a meeting on the 22nd?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, we're all up to date, we're up to speed, we're all on the same page. Good. I think we're ready to adjourn. On the very back.
I move we adjourn until the next regularly scheduled meeting on October 8th?
Yes. At 6:00, well, we have the study session at 5:00 PM, is that correct? So we'll adjourn to the study session or the next, what, a regular planning committee? Is it the Regular Planning Commission meeting? Is that where we're adjourned to? Is that, that's your motion?
Yep.
I second. All those in favor of adjourning? Aye. Good night. We're adjourned. Thanks, Brandon.